Call for roll call.
Commissioner Mon here.
Commissioner Stabs here. And will is anybody in the audience who would like to offer an invocation? If you permit me, I would offer the prayer.
Sure.
Dear heavenly Father, we come before thee and we're so grateful for the many blessings that thou bestowed upon this land, for the moisture we have received, for all the protection and for all the beauty and and for being part of this great work. We pray for the Spirit to be with us at this time that whatever bad memory lingers in our mind for what some of the people have witnessed here that may be erased and and along with that, we ask for protection from such things, from our youth, from our children, from all of us and we pray for 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 prosperity of this land that we be able to sustain ourselves and and we ask for protection and also we ask that we're blessed, the members of this county, from the little ones to the older ones, that thou would bless and protect our workers, that they will be safe and and they may be able to feel the love for each of them. And can we, by this time, we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ? Amen.
Amen.
I was putting my makeup this morning. I said, I felt that I should not put something in my eyes because I've been crying. But there's nothing to cry. But anyway, I ask for your excuse me for that. Anyway, so we'll ask James Nelson if he can lead us on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time it's for us to declare conflict interest disclosure.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none either. And we'll turn the time to Mac for public comment.
Mine is.
Good job, Laura.
Sorry. Right? Yep, mine is.
All right. So anybody wishing to make a public comment, it looks like mostly Stab in the audience. There is any, Mr. Harvey's online. Just to note that other than that.
So Commissioner Harvey's online.
Nobody else here to make public comment like there was a minute ago.
Okay. So then we need to acknowledge Commissioner Harvey being present. Commissioner Harvey? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Okay. Did you have any conflict of interest in the agenda?
I do not have any conflict of interest for myself.
Thank you. So so we have nobody for public and public hearing, so we'll go into the consent agenda.
Okay, today for the consent agenda, we have the approval of twenty seven thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety five cents for small purchases. You had two hundred and fifty nine on a use pap online class for the assessors department. I don't know if that's type of you have one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and one cent on cloud cap window glass for the road department, fifteen thousand on lodging and dining video for visitor services, two thousand eighty dollars on catering, four thousand one hundred and sixty seven on a cell phone mount, task force activation fee and task force storage plan, and four thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars and ninety four cents on Achilles defense vote out for the sheriff's office. Item number two, we have the approval of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five Board of Commission meeting minutes. You have number three approval of November fourth, twenty twenty five Commission Board Commission meeting minutes. Item number four approval of the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five Board of Commissioner Work Session Minutes. And you have item number five approval of the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five Board of Commission Meeting Minutes. Item number six approval of check registers for October eighteenth through November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Item seven approval of the updated budget for twenty twenty six appendix A to the county fire warden agreement. This one here is just a routine. Every year we go through and approve that fire warden agreement, make sure it's in our budget. Item number eight approval of the Utah Cooperative Wildfire System Participation Commitment between Utah Division for State Fire and State Lands and San Juan County for the fiscal year twenty twenty six. Item number nine approval for additional policies to the San Juan County Senior Center Policy and Procedure Manual, which is a small update that was required by the state, if I remember right. And item number ten approval of the Bancorp Lease Agreement for Sheriff's Office for Bronco Lease Vehicle. This is that one lease vehicle that we ordered for a while. You still have yet to see the twelve come in, so this is just for that one. That, Commissioner, is your consent agenda item for today.
Do we have any questions or comments or do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve. Commissioner Harvey, can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear you. I will second the motion to approve, but I just have some questions. If I could, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Maybe for clarification purposes, like to look at item number seven and just quickly review the the information. This is for the upcoming year, I imagine.
Twenty twenty six.
And
this has the cost of living increases anticipated for them. David, our fire chief, had presented this to you last commission meeting, and this is the follow-up to get it approved or during his budget, one of those last meetings.
So do you have a question for for Mr. Gallegos? He is here. Gallegos, I guess you said.
Commissioner Harvey, do you have a question for me?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gallegos, I just wanted to kind of read through the numbers that you are proposing for this upcoming fiscal year, just for, I think, for public knowledge. And what, is there an increase in the budget or is it pretty much the same?
So there's an increase on the fire warden's budget due to the, they call it COLA. And the state decides that. We don't really decide if we're going to give them an increase or not. We pretty much just have to agree. And the increase, and the increase on that, this year is going to be eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars compared to last year's.
On your total budget or just salary? Because the salary is still like three.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so eight on your total?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, appreciate the clarification. I think just my, my comments to your work, Mr. Gallegos, thank you for, for your hard work. I know we had the LaSalle incident this, this summer. I'm sure that was an experience for the county and, you know, we had a lot of families impacted up in that area. And just appreciative of your efforts with managing and responding to, to the wildfires that happen in our county. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Just doing what I was hired for. Any, any other questions?
I just wanted a comment. I'm just so grateful to to you and to Tammy to put it together, updating both of your procedure manuals, and I think they're so important to, these change so fast and, and there's lots of pages that you guys had to do and we appreciate your work. Thank you. So we have a second to the motion. Commissioner Harvey?
Madam Chair, just moving on to my, my next question on, on our, on our agenda, I think it's the senior citizen policies.
Okay.
Just for the record, I'm requesting clarification on the policies that are being added for our approval. Just a real quick summary of how many policies are we talking about? And for each policy, what area is the focus of the policy? What area is the policy covering? That would be my question, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Fourteen. And one, we already have the backing policy. It's just an update. Getting a signature sheet and some training sheets so that staff acknowledges every year that they have gone through the backing policy with the vehicles and have looked at the training sheet, and then they sign off on that. The next one is a bingo card game and pool tournaments policy. That one we had to implement. They shouldn't be playing games for money at the senior centers. It's gambling and could put our funding at risk. The next one is the fiscal policy. That one's just an update, and it just puts us in compliance with state and federal guidelines. It cites the state and federal rules and how we draw down that money. The home delivered meal policy is getting an update. The state had an aging training in September, end of, end of September, first of October. And they've asked that we label all of the home delivered meals that go out with a best by date and also just making sure that we update the nutrition rule with the guidance that the state has given us and safety and education on those meals that go into the home, like how they can reheat them. And those we just put on a magnet and they'll go in the home. The meal contribution, we had to update that one so that we make sure that we're keeping the contributions voluntary and confidential per the federal guidelines. Meal preparation, we updated that one, and this one is just defining a little bit more for the staff serving sizes and instructions and training as well, so that each year they'll sign off on a training sheet that they've been trained on serving sizes. The serving sizes go along with the nutrition audit, so they should be serving the same size of serving for everyone. Meal prioritization policy and guideline, this one is a newer one. This one came down from the state in that training. If federal and state money were to ever get cut further, and we would have to look at prioritizing meals, that would be, it just lays out our prioritization of meals and how we would serve, who would, who we would serve first and if we create a waiting list. Menus have been updated to clarify state compliance with requirements to meet the DRI, which is the Daily Recommended Intake, and to maintain proper review procedures for those menus. The state has also told us that we have to monitor all of our subcontractors, so that one is a new policy that we have, that we've added in so that we're monitoring anybody that we subcontract with, with state and federal funds to make sure they're following contracting guidelines. And then we have occupational health and safety. That one's just an update on lifting procedures, making sure people are lifting safely. And then the online senior center activity, that one we had to update because the state eliminated the statewide calendar due to budget reductions, so we're just taking that out of that policy. Then we have the second, third, and third meal leftover policy, and that's just an update, trying to follow state guidelines. Temperature checks, that's an update. They've wanted thermometers in all of the fridges, but now they're requesting that we put thermometers in our hot shot vehicles as well. And then the time clock policy, that's just making sure that all of our staff is clocking in and out and following county guidelines on logging their time so that we're not chasing payroll at the end of every two weeks. So that would be the updates, Commissioner.
Very good, Madam Chair. Again, I, I value the hard work that Ms. Gallegos does for our seniors in our county. I know we have a facility that everyone relies on in bluff, coarse blending, I believe Monticello and LaSalle. Thank you, Ms. Gallegos, for your hard work and helping to feed our seniors, especially the meals on Will's program. I think that program is even more valuable around this time of the season because some roads get treacherous and hard. And a lot of the seniors rely on the program so that they remain fed and and that they're able to, to have food. And appreciate your work with compliance with the state and the federal government. And especially just making sure our senior citizen facilities are safe, that we're complying to federal and state requirements. Thank you, Madam Chair. That was my, my questions. I have no more questions. I'm ready to vote.
So did you second then? Okay, so I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The resolution passed unanimously. And then we're going to recognition, presentation, information, informational items.
Okay, number eleven here is San Juan County is terminating the voluntary benefits contract. We currently have with Allstate Insurance, we're requesting to use Guardian as a new provider for voluntary group insurance. Tranner here, Tranner's been working to try to solve Allstate and transition to Guardian.
There's a page in there, I can't see.
All right, Commissioner. So on here we have a master application. Then we have another form that has me and Mac on there as administrators on the plan. So I'll be the primary, and then if anything was to happen to me, Mac would have access. And then I think I've attached a termination later, letter to Allstate as well. And so just making sure you guys are aware, we're also needing signatures on the letters.
This is voluntary insurance that our employees elect to, to purchase. Been having some difficulty with Allstate and the payments to those individuals that have elected for Allstate coverage. And so that became so, so prevalent just this last year where employees weren't getting paid their appropriate claims on there. And so we have elected to, to shop out. We use GBS, which is our consulting firm that helps us with our overall insurance in general. And they, they had recommended Guardian to, to switch from Allstate.
Right.
Employees, like I mentioned, this is still something that employees elect. It's kind of additional coverage that they can choose to have. They still, there's still a cost that employees have for that seduction that comes out of their checks. That's why you have this for you today is that switch.
Commissioner Harvey, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this, on this request, we're, we're moving the employee, is it the life?
It is not. It is not the life insurance. It is like critical illness, the indemnity plan, the hospital.
Kind of like the supplemental?
Yeah, the voluntary supplemental insurance.
And is that, are we, are we making the change because Allstate has reduced coverage or is it cost?
So no, back.
Was more appealing?
So back, back in May, we had around the checks, a handful of employees received back from Allstate. And so getting to the fine print of it, there was, the monies that had been deducted had not been applied to their plans. So just a hiccup, and then we've had a couple, a couple of the coverages from county employees that were not, they were under, the understanding that they'd be covered for like a hospital stay and Allstate failed to, to cover that. And so we talked to GBS. GBS shopped Allstate, they shopped Guardian, then they shopped a third insurance. And so we elected Guardian. It gives us the same, the same protection. It's, it's a little bit less than what Allstate was at and gives us a little bit more coverage. It gives us more options.
Is there, will there be better communication with GBS in regards to, you know, the payments that are made by the employees that they are applied to the premiums?
So there, there should be, we should be getting a roster monthly, I mean, with the deductions, and we send those deductions. We send a check from the county into Guardian. And so, yes, that should be more streamlined process. With All, with Allstate, we are under the, the same understanding, but for whatever reason, they were pulling, I had to explain to me from GBS that they were pulling from one month. It's like they're stealing from Peter to pay for Paul and no one not accounting for where that money's coming from and where it's going.
Will this require the staff to manually update their coverage in the system? Or after this approval, will, will it just be automatically switched over?
So we just got done with open enrollment, and so it was an option on there, and so it will be updated with your approval.
How long will that window be open to make the change with the new?
So I, I've been in communications with them and as soon, I mean, if, if you guys approve it, sign off on it, I will be sending them the letters back tomorrow, and then it will roll out January first.
Will there be any gap for those that are under Allstate right now for this month?
No, so that will end the thirty first of December. So it will terminate the end of this month, and then starting January first, the Guardian plan rolls out.
Those are my questions, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tranner.
Yep. Thanks, Commissioner Harvey.
I just have a question of interest. Guardian is, we used to have an ambulance named Guardian here in the area. Are they associated with a company?
No, they are not.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have to make any? Is there a motion?
I do have that question, if that's okay. So this is a presentation information item, so technically we can't vote on this.
Okay.
So we probably, but if it doesn't go into effect till January one, they just need to be, does it have to be thirty days prior?
So they are needing the signature to adopt it, is what they're needing.
So it should have really, we should have really had it as an action item, but maybe we could ratify it, I guess, in our next commission meeting.
We can.
We'd have to ratify it.
Okay.
So, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now down to the business action.
Okay. This one here is item number twelve, consideration and approval of service missionary volunteering or animal care standing between San Juan County and the Church Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. You have Tammy here to present this item.
Awesome. So I had some representatives reach out and ask if we could have missionaries volunteer at the senior centers, and I told them yes, and they've provided me this MOU, and we just need it for signature, and they can go in and help serve the meal on meal days. So I am seeking a signature for this MOU.
So, you know, I work with some of the volunteers that come from the program, and they're amazing people to work for, and they're just, the opportunities, and I think that you presented this, that must mean that you want them to come, and, and they're, they are delighted to work with. And I had had opportunity to work with several of them, so I want to ask for a motion.
So I have one question, if I may first. So there's obviously two types of missionaries, because there's full time and then there's service. Would the service missionaries be monitored at all? Because they're all, they're on all different capacities and levels, and according to the requirements, can they all fill those requirements? We just got to make sure that we're covered on every end.
Yeah, so they've, they've sent me their, their work plan.
Okay.
They will have, senior center staff will be there the whole time. They're not to be left with the seniors alone. That's part of their requirements as well. As you read through some of their stuff, it says that they can't be left unattended with vulnerable adults or children and by state law, once you become a senior, you are classified in that as being a vulnerable adult. So we've had to tell them they can be there during hours of operation when the center director or staff is there. They can't be left alone with the staff, so there will be somebody there to monitor them.
Lots of times those programs have, you know, used to be service missionaries seen in a certain way. But there's missionaries, I have worked with missionaries, they went to foreign country. And for some reason, the adjustment was hard and they And for some reason, the adjustment was hard and they came back and and served. Under me for a while and then they went back. Sometimes it's adjusting sometime. And so they have multiple ability in being capable, but it's nice to have safeguards for. I always see those things. When I used to cha- childcare as a protection to the child and a protection to the worker. And I always had two people, even if we have one child. And so it's, you know, protection, both direction and it's nice to have those rules to. Anyway, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Harvey, do you have any?
Madam Chair, I will second the motion to approve, but I'd like to ask some questions if I could. Ms. Gallegos, uh in regards to your thoughts on how? The missionaries will be assigned. Are you thinking that? The missionaries are only going to one senior center and and this is only for. Just a specific senior center? Or is this agreement in place so that we're kind of? Assigning missionaries to kind of rotate through our county senior citizens. Citizen facilities. To kind of contribute in that sense. What? What are what are your thoughts in regards to placement and scheduling? I'm just curious.
So according to the people that I have been working with right now, there's only interest for one. That is wanting to do this at the Monticello Center, but with the MOU in place. If there's an interest for others, we have the MOU in place and they would just have to notify me that. They have somebody that wants to go into whichever center. And the MOU makes that possible without us having to redo this again.
And just to. When you're done, I'm just gonna add one more thing. I guess the suggest, um the Christian sense which oversee the missionaries, they have a large, large area. They cover multiple, I mean, all the reservation, I mean, because. Multiple is a large area that from Farmington, part one side of Farmington. So they can have programs. You know, if they um. The the branches and the area requests or people work through the. Through their stakes or whatever, but their area is covers and they. They cut a large area, so be opportunity for people to serve and. It's kind of hard for some of them to travel, one mission travel different area. They have to get used to our routine sometime. And it's kind of hard because each center would have different people, had to get and. Transportation is a a a family issue for people to be transported and so. I have missionaries that were wa- walking distance and they were walking this the distance so. Anyway. So we have a motion that we have a and we have a second from Commissioner Harvey.
Madam Chair. I was just gonna recommend maybe. If we could keep the opportunity open for future. Additional areas that that could be available for missionaries to help. With uh the center. I I'm in my mind, I'm thinking of Bluff. Bluff would probably welcome. The help. If they're able to, so. My 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 recommendation would be if we could. Move them all over our county. That would be, I was, I think it would be great, but. That's that's all my comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And you didn't make a second. Yeah, anyway, so I'll in paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pass the resolution, pass your announcement.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do and.
Thank you.
I'm back. I'd like to apologize for the presentation I had previous. I was looking at the numbers wrong, uh Commissioner. While you're right on the money with the firework and budget increased, I was looking at the PC for eight thousand increased.
That's okay, I guess actually the question, I think you're kind of asked both parts, so it's totally fine.
Anyways, uh this document is required by the state for the counties to have in place. Uh the last one was uh done in twenty eighteen and we are due for a renewal. I also like to thank Tammy for this document because without her doing it and me helping a little bit. They would have cost us at least forty to sixty thousand dollars to contract it out, so. Do you have any questions for me on this document?
It's a long document.
Yes, it is.
Thanks for your work, both of you, because I, if I may, Madam Chair. Are there any big changes from the eighteen to this one? Because I didn't have anything to compare it to, so.
No, there's not a whole lot.
Yeah, other than maybe a few updates.
I think the few updates with the maps on high risk and uh low risk and all those. But other than that, yeah.
I start I started from the back with my agenda. I don't know why I read backwards. And so, so I read the whole thing and there's so many little details that you don't think about. Pences that have locked in the gate having a an alternative way to get to the fire and. And different things, you know, it just it's so well detailed and I appreciate the. The work that you and your partner have put together and.
Coworker.
And I'm sure it's an effort, you know, I mean, it's a team effort in every direction and. And so, thank you for that. And so, Commissioner Harvey, you have any?
Uh Madam Chair, maybe some comments on. Our. Kind of exposure recently at our our Utah State. Association, the annual meeting we all went to. And I'm not sure how, what we've learned there. Impacts the plan that um we're we're kind of reviewing today for approval. But there was House Bill forty eight. And I know that uh the state. Was looking at um, I think it's high populated areas. I think for us maybe. Were were more none of a big concern, but. I think with House Bill forty eight, they were talking about. Implementing a. These a statewide policy about structures and. Having to comply with uh having certain structures within your. Lot or boundaries, I think it was. And I think the concern was. When there's a fire. Those structures are most likely to. To light up because of the falling ash and such. Um and I know the state's been working on a wildfire risk map. And I think they called it the Urap map.
Yes.
And talking about, you know, making fees happen. Still a lot of. Opportunity for public input, but is this our county's? Um kind of local approach to how we're. We're managing because we're kind of more rural. Is this kind of like a an effort to? To say to the state, because we're rural and we're county, this is our plans. And how does it relate to House Bill forty? Is that something totally different? From from this this policy? What does that look like?
So I'm glad you brought that up. Uh I brought Ryan with me um. In case you guys had any questions about that bill. And to my understanding, this is a different document from the CWS. But if you allow me to have Ryan come up here and have him answer any questions you might have on House Bill forty eight.
Uh yeah, so so with this document CWPP, um it's a cooperative wildfire protection plan. Um this is specifically set up for your county, your entities, um people associated here within your area. So you're you're classifying what you guys feel is risk area for your county in your county alone. Um this is something that these uh the counties put together, um with Tammy and David and them put this together that. Dictates what we feel is areas of interest here within the county. So this is completely different than House Bill forty eight. House Bill forty eight is a program set up by the state. That comes in and defines high risk areas within. Your communities within statewide. So there they've got about fifteen layer map, fifteen seventeen layers of a map put together. Once they overlay all of them. Compile all them things in there, it's gonna mark certain areas of statewide, which comes into topography. Fuel loading, ember wash, uh terrain, all that stuff combined. That is the area that the state's coming up with House Bill forty eight to declare. High risk wooey. Okay, that is something totally different than CWS and this cooperative wildfire plan. You know, they're two total separate uh programs. Um they can work together, you can utilize the. House Bill forty eight, that wooey that's coming out, that high risk area to help. You know, dictate where you guys would like to put wooey. And classify that wooey land within your CWPP. That's in there, but they are not, they're not the same program. They're two total separate, separate programs.
Thank you. And I think that bill is. It passed and they didn't ask many questions, so they not accept many inputs. They just passed it and I would say that's not very popular with counties our size and. Agriculture type of feeling and. I don't know, it's my feeling that probably is gonna be revisited a little bit during this new legislature. I don't know, Commissioner Mommy may have more information.
I I, the thing is, is I. With with that bill, the hardest part I have is that they're putting the burden on the state. Well, the county's to collect, then the money goes to state. But the other problem with that is that they want this fire mitigation, but then I'm. Saying, okay, well, where's the collaboration with the forests? Because, for example, my place butts up to the forest, but. I mean, because they're on a federal level, the rules are different. I mean, we're not putting a ton of pressure. On the forest. I mean, I think there's more now than there has been, but to to take down those fuel loads. That help all of us that have those houses in those areas as well. So I feel kind of like the burden's resting on the states, the counties. And then we're saying, okay, now Forest Service, we hope, you know, you'll participate, whatever they're gonna do. So. That's kind of my struggle with it. And the other problem I have is that with the fees. They really don't know the fee, so it's anywhere between about twenty and a hundred dollars for the first year. And then they, then we have to have our maps drawn. And then we go in and as a. Personal property owner, I have to get someone that's certified to come in and assess what my area looks like. And then my fee, I don't know. It's just, it's so unknown and it's so difficult because. In areas like where I live, it's so difficult to get insured anyway. Is the closest, I mean, I don't have a well because I could not get water, not from lack of trying, but. So anyhow, the closest fire station is ten miles or ten miles, I'm right in the middle. And so you're kind of. And and we knew that, but now you're kind of, I don't want to say you're being penalized. And and I completely accept responsibility as a landowner to help. You know, clear that area to make it so it's safe for where we live, but. I I don't know, the whole wildfire is just, it's it's a hot topic. Everywhere. And everyone puts blame on everyone else. And and I agree, we all need to do our part. But I I really feel it's opening that door for insurance companies to really come and make some big decisions for people that. There's not, you know, that this kind of force, that that's the piece that I struggle with a little bit is instead of, I feel like instead of working collaboratively with insurance companies. It's like, okay, now we have all these vulnerable homes and it, oh, we can insure you or we're gonna op you and then. If you don't have anybody to insure you, you're kind of over a barrel with maybe one company that will, so I don't know. I see why it's a hot topic.
Definitely see why it's a hot topic, so.
So and and with that is, um you know, we have had several public hearings that have been broadcast um statewide, so we've had three of them. We are looking right now to possibly bring another um meeting and get um. Jamie Barnes and Joseph Anderson, which are the head of the DNR and the head of the this House Bill forty eight. To do a presentation and come down and answer questions and comments more. Um so we're trying to get them over here into the southeast area. Um to do an in-person meeting, which would probably end up, I would say, in Green River for in-person or to do a virtual meeting. So if anybody's interested in. Wanting to to do that, uh please reach out to me and I'll get it scheduled up and get you on an email list to where when that comes out, we can. We can definitely, you know, present that. And then you guys can bring questions, um exactly what you're asking. Them type of questions into these public hearings and uh get some more in-depth. Talk on that because as of January first, House Bill forty eight is going into effect. You know, as as they say, to where then they'll start processing. Through it um until, what is it, twenty eighteen or twenty twenty eight, I mean, excuse me.
Yeah, and I like the meeting I joined, it was great. Tons of information. No, I think the one Mac joined was very colorful with comments. So it depends on your crowd, right?
It does.
But I and it there was, there was a ton of information, but I still feel there's a ton of unknowns as the state navigates through this as well. And and hopefully we'll all learn together.
And and that was one thing that came to us from the state was was it was off, it was presented by legislation to forestry fire and state lands. To impose and implement this program. So they've been working through. To go off of what legislation said and and implement it and come up with a product. You know, that people can utilize. You know, it's not saying every home that's out there is gonna go into high risk. You know, you've got to fall into one of them carrot, you know, when they overlay the map and it comes out and that map's supposed to be out available, I think, January. Is when, is when we'll see exactly how much. How many homes in San Juan County um are actually affected by House Bill forty eight and and hit into that high risk. Correct. And that's and that's the thing is they have it set up to where we can get you guys involved with Joseph and them and they'll help you. Work through that process of of collecting that fee and how how to process that on on the county's side.
Thank you. Any more question, Commissioner Harvey?
No, I just uh, I appreciate the clarification specifically that. This document that we're reviewing and are gonna approve today. Is really a separate and complete thing from the ongoing discussions of that. The state level regarding House Bill. Um forty eight. Um it it's, it's probably to the benefit of the public just to clarify that. The the plan. The the plan that we're approving today is really just like a strategy. Kind of like a, a response plan is is what I'm looking at as. Because you guys are are kind of planning in advance. Should there be a fire in a specific part of the county? There's, there's, there's probably identified a high-fuel, high-risk locations. That are a priority for you to go and respond to first, and then it's later down to places where. It's it's not a a big, a big uh, kind of a secondary thing, but. I'm looking at this plan as, you know, uh. A response plan and 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 how things will be responded to. In an orderly fashion, so that should the fire happen, we're not in a chaotic state. Everyone knows where to go and what to do. And I think this plan is gonna be. How often is this plan normally? Um, revised, is it, is it a standing plan for five years? Um. Is it, what's the recommendations for how good the plan is good for once? The the revisions are made. I think that's my final question, Madam Chair.
So that is correct, that this plan is for five years and um. It's required by the state for the counties to have it.
Very good. And I imagine that should a financial need happen, like a state of an emergency. The first thing that the powers that be ask for probably is. Is there a current plan that the county follows? And, you know, all the funding probably comes and channels down through the all that too, so. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm ready for a vote.
Okay, I just wanna add to what had been said and um, a little bit, I think. One thing is now the solution for uh, everything, I think we'll have to. Approach a need for control fire control from different direction. And the um, Commission Media November eighteen. In the business action number five, we as a commission approve a resolution using. Urchin U S Forest Service was. To maintain the forest basic to be able to prevent forest fire by removing. Anything that were in it uh. Allow fires to happen. And so I, and that came from having heard that the six, sixth county. Passed a res- a resolution similar and. And we're gonna look from some partners to be able to partner with this with others uh, counties. Because. When the the growth is overgrown, not only create fires, but also sucks the water. One time in like in Blinding, we had a mountain full of snow and nothing came to the reservoir. And then later I see attend a meeting where they talk about this situation. All the overgrown brushes sucking all the moisture before it gets. And so, there's so many things that we need to approach and. Thank you for, you know, what you do and are doing and what's coming our way. I think it's gonna take. Many ways to to look at the problem and eventually working together, we'll be able to come with a good solution, so. Anyway, so please no more questions or comment, and we wanna thank you for being here and. And for all you guys do and we'll entertain a motion. I, we have a motion. We have a hands up, Commissioner Harvey has a hands up.
Oh, he's clapping.
Oh, she's clapping. Okay, we like clapping. So we have a motion in a second. Did you second it already? Okay, so.
Second, yep.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, the next one is item number fourteen, consideration and approval of San Juan County Public Health Infrastructure twenty twenty-three contract. Between the state of Utah, Houghton Human Services and San Juan County Amendment Number Two. Mike is here to present this, Mike.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, so this first one here, the. Health Department uh, infrastructure grant is, they're just decreasing some of the funding and shifting. How some of it is reimbursed based on um, the deliverables that we provide. Um, so we're just looking for approval for, yeah, that change in funding.
I had a question for that. Is that something you notice in happening more, the federal government coming adjusting?
Um, I haven't.
This is the first one you saw, probably.
This is, um, it was decided on the state level. To use some of the funding that was awarded to all thirteen health districts to take a piece of it back to to implement another program.
No, I was just curious to see what the forecast is out there, so. Any question? No question? So, have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve and.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is consideration and approval of the E P A radon grant program of the Utah Department of the Darnell.
This grant is, um, as you can see, for five thousand dollars from the E P A. This would be awarded to us to do work that we've already been doing. We found out that there was some funding.
Ask a question, I thought five thousand dollar for Iranian area, I thought that doesn't go very far, but just an addition, I guess, to that.
Right. Yeah, Dennis Shamway, our environmental environmental health director, he's already. Testing the schools and raising awareness, answering people's questions. That's all that's required for this funding, so.
It's amazing the documentation it takes to sign for five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Lot of pages.
Yeah, for sure.
Any questions or comments?
Um, I'd like to go ahead and motion and then after you take a second, Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, and Commissioner Harvey has a comment or question, I don't know.
M- Madam Chair, this is just a comment, uh, and it's for Mike. Um, Mike, I know you've been keeping the fort. Holding up the fort there with the public health department and bearing a lot of workload and weight. But I wanna say thank you for, for your hard work. I know it's a lot. In the interim, we we thought we had a public health director for sure. And then all of a sudden we didn't and. You know, you have my deep respect for, for your commitment in spite of. All the different changes, you're there, you're you're in the facility or. I'm sure the rest of the staff are looking up to you for guidance and direction and. If you haven't heard it today, or any, any time this month or last month or the past six months, thank you. Um, you're you're a very awesome, hard-working guy and to have that many programs under your belt. Um, thank you. That's just my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. After looking at your budget and how big it is. There's lots of work there. Anyway, thank you so much. I did have a chance to visit with you earlier and so. Thank you so much for what you do and so. So all in favor, do you have any comment? But all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Okay, item sixteen is consideration and approval of a memorandum of understanding between southeastern Utah. This one here is actually Commissioner Stubbs.
Can I just, yeah, yeah, I would like to make some comment before we consider any motion, just to give some credit to. Um, you know, lots of time we go leave the county and people wonder what is that accomplished and. I had the opportunity to be coached. By two good coaches as I went to the Capitol, Mac and also Commissioner Adams. They never let me sit on the sidelines, they just. Commissioner, uh, Adam would say, let's go visit this, and he took this. Two steps and he was on the second floor and I still trying to find the elevator to catch up with him. But because I always was around him, I had the opportunity to meet this wonderful, talented young woman. Kelsey Bird, that's her name. She was working with Senator Mitt Romney at the time. And so every time I was, I was around Commissioner, uh, Adams, she would put her. Sister also, she would put her elbow on my shoulder and we kinda, in a way, rub shoulder, I guess, and. So then when, um. The, the Senator decided not to run sick reelection, so she went to work for the Larry H Mueller Foundation. And so one day, it was just the two of us, I asked her, so what that entails? And she said, well, she told me about the Larry H Mueller Foundation. And she said, you live in Blinding City? Yeah, she said, we need to do something for Blinding. We'll do that. And so that was the second year, so around. When I first went to the legislature, she always come on the, on the county state to say hello to lots of the friends that she had made through the years. And so she sent me across the room and she said, I haven't forgotten, let's get together. So. Start in March with, uh, February, we start talking about a grant, but the county could now receive the grant. We had to have a, a foundation to do it and. But we did set up the meeting, she did give me the amount of the grant. And I got, so we got together with her and two of her assistants, and it was assigned an assistant after that. And when she, the assistant sent me a text message, he said, we're gonna meet in the morning, so I. I noticed that about two o'clock in the morning, so I started making a wish list and I was giving the amount. And so when we got together, this person said, whoa, 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 he said, we had never given. That much and the first time is five thousand, if it's a really good project, we had given six thousand. And she said, I'll call back, so she called back. And she said, it is fifty thousand dollar, we'll go for fifty thousand dollar. And so, and she said, I don't know what the board's gonna do, but they did vote. And by the foundation, I have found to work with, they they did not do, um. They did part of the grant proposal, but they couldn't do the other part. So Mac and. Contacted us, um. Serta, uh, and we talked to Jade. Don't think it's less, anyway. And so basically, they uh, allow us to use their foundation number. Not only that, but as I had the grant, uh, I had the details how I wanted the grant to be. And then we have, um. People from their department to help us, um. We had Luisa, um, help us write the grant and the grant got funded. So now we have the. Uh, what we have proven is that the memorandum agreement. And my expectation was that since they helped us write the grant, they probably they took a percentage. Of the funds, which would make sense for them to manage the grant. But they were so curious and so nice and I love working, working with them. I have worked quite a bit with our organization and. And so there's no cost to us and the purpose of the grant part will be. Because as I work with Talia with the community development grants that she receive and people request. When you have a hundred thirty thousand dollar to to give out and people asking over a million dollar request for business is. It's a sad moment because not everybody's dreams get realized and so. My uh, idea would be to stretch our monies together and be able to, able to help more. And, and so, e- even though the grant is just for Blinding, we have lots of native. Population within that area and it's gonna be serving, um. A large number of people and anyway, so I just wanted to keep credit to that and also to. To realize that when we go out of the county, we either. I speak for myself, I either invite people to come over here and see what we have and what we deal with. Or trying to figure out some ways to, um. To be able to bring something back to the county and I, I was very emotional when realizing that. That the money, that we are privileged to give that amount. And not only that, just as they were deciding about the money. Um, Kelsey Bird is now part of the. Begin, big, uh, the Olympics, so she's in the Olympic Committee and so it was just the right time for her to. To do this. I don't know if I got that kind of money if she wasn't there as a, as a director, so I. Gr- grateful for that and so grateful to be able to help more, more businesses and. And improving, will improve the, the appearance of the main street and Blinding and things like that, so. Quite a few things that were gonna happen, but just wanna keep credit where credits do and. And I'm grateful for the opportunity, so. Mac, you can. Did you wanna say anymore or? Okay, anyway, so if you have any questions or any other thing or if you have a motion to. To accept the memorandum of understanding.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, I, first of all, I, I will make a motion to accept. Um, the M O U. The only, the only question I have is, when we, which I think this is amazing. And all the time and effort and I do appreciate it and thank you very much. Um, the only thing is, I think if there are future grants that we could apply for like this, that we also consider. Our other communities, um, Monticello Bluff, so that, because. Everyone needs, and I know there's not a lot of money, but I, I, you know, just be mindful of the whole extent and region of our counties.
Yeah, I understand that and I do have other projects that cannot talk about, that will benefit other areas. And so, I guess I could say, I just got notified, I wrote a. A ten thousand dollar grant that's gonna go for the nation, the four corners. I don't know if you guys are familiar. Uh, in Blinding is a area where it have four different culture, uh, centers, little centers. And so that's gonna benefit students coming, having outdoor classrooms. Benefit students coming from all the schools, from the whole school district. And so. Um, so that is, uh, and it's, that grant is gonna become, soon that we get the contract, I was just notified. And, um, that was a grant, they. It was very stressful as I was preparing, things were not, I was not receiving letters of support and. People were saying, did send it and I couldn't find it. It was very, very traumatic and. I sent the budget and the budget wasn't right and I out, I sent for two thousand and then I asked Talia if she would help me. Didn't take her very long to help with the budget and I was able to request ten thousand and they did, um, and. They get the funds and it's gonna be managed by the library. We're gonna have a librarian that's gonna keep track of the activities and we have a good partnership, we got a college to be partnered. And that was, we had the school district representing all the schools that they can, so we'll have. this is one part, then we're gonna apply for another grant, we'll, we'll be able to have equipment like binoculars and, and magnifying glasses, all kinds of stuff that we can do to have those, that class and it's, I, I don't know if you have, have a chance to visit that area, it's a, it's a unique area and I think that because of uniqueness and because it's a multicultural, and I think it's gonna benefit the whole school district. Anyway, so I wanna add to that and so that's one I can share now because I just got notified that we did get that one, so. Any more comments or are we ready for?
We need a second.
We have a, a motion.
I need the motion, but we don't have a second yet.
So we need, we have a second, Commissioner Harvey?
Oh, I'll second, I, just looking over the agreement itself and I wanted to ask some questions.
Okay.
Um, Southeastern Utah Downtown Allianz. Um, not familiar with them, so maybe I can start there. Um, remind me, I'm pretty sure I've been told a few times now. There, I, I recognize they're a private 501(c)(3) organization.
Isn't that Serta's 501?
It is Southeastern, it's the Association of Governments under Jerry.
Yeah, Commissioner Mon is representing on the board.
To do grants, they form, under that umbrella, a 501(c)(3) named Southeastern Utah Downtown Alliance and so it's just an arm of Serta. It's the private arm of, or the nonprofit arm of Serta. So you'll kinda see the same type of activity take place with the CJC, you have the criminal justice services that we offer here, to have a friends of the CJC, they, they want that to be a nonprofit 501(c)(3) as well. So that we can get the donations to the CJC system, so Serta has done the same thing, so when you look at the signature, the chair this year for the downtown, this Serta Downtown Alliance is Commissioner Bill Winfield from Grant County, he's the representative and that will rotate, you know, as the Association of Government changes the rotation of chairs.
And, even.
Did that answer your question?
And even though Blondie is part of my area, it's only one third of Blondie in part of my area, the other third is your area and the other third is Commissioner Harvey, so it's not just my contingent being benefited, it's the, the whole city of Blondie.
Okay, yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Chair for clarification. Um, I just wanna resonate Commissioner Mon's comments about when we're securing grants, let's, let's keep in mind countywide opportunities. Um, I know last commission meeting, I kinda mentioned Montezum Creek and the Roundabout. Um, those are our community, kinda discussions that engage the community and so yeah, if we can work through this alliance, to think countywide, it would benefit all of our, of our communities, that would be great.
Well, another way that this grant help is Commissioner, um, and Talia's program, she, I, I've been involved with that program for three years, the first year last year got lots of the money. Okay, the second year, Bluff got lots of the money. And, and the second year, Blondie only got twelve thousand, last year they got more money. So what happened, if I help her in, in, in those areas, they have the money to help, it frees up money to be able to help her down south or up north and so there's, it never just money for a few, I mean, there is, um, any money, any money that comes to our county can help by freeing up other funds to be able to, to do that and I thought to, this is, on the side note, about, they need more help with, uh, the library up in, they need more in area funds to update their computers and so I'll talk to you about working together again to put, for the library in Montezum Creek. Anyway, so we have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah, you did second.
You did second, okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, did a lot to get this.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, the next item in the motion there. Okay, this is the consideration and approval of an ordinance twenty twenty five, establishing county data privacy program in compliance with Utah Government Data Privacy Act. As a reminder, this has to be approved before December thirty first. This is your second review of it, last time you had requested changes to this ordinance and so we went back and made some changes to that. The most important one is you wanted to have the chief privacy officer, that separation. Um, so you have the chief administrative officer named in here, you also have the chief privacy officer. Couple things to note on this, um, as we attended the Association of Counties Conference and listened to where this bill was going i- in general, data privacy and some of the concerns that the state has. I added, um, on here, section eight and nine, those are new on here and so section eight reads, the chief administrative office and the privacy officer will watch and review any software purchases by the departments throughout the county operations. Software that collects private data will be presented to the county commissioners to see if there is a need for a public hearing with our citizens, who will determine if we should use that specific software that collects private data. During that discussion at, at the Association of Counties, the representative that was kind of in charge of this legislation um, had indicated that a lot of public safety software now is like scanning for license plates. And if they're scanning for license plates, what happens with that data? Cause it gets into the DMV record and everything of that license plate and that vehicle, well, what it, what does that software do with the data itself, who owns it, does the county own it? Or does it say, or does even, probably more importantly, do our citizens believe and want that data collected? And so in here, it kind of pushes that software that maybe collecting privacy data back to the commission to review with the privacy officer to see if there's anything like that, that is a concern to the commission and if it is, we can hold a public hearing with the public to make sure that the public is also aware that, hey, we're collecting your data. When you look in and you go take it a little bit further to drone footage, they're doing surveillance and they're collecting that surveillance video. Well, does our private, does our citizens really care if we're collecting that data? You know, it showed their home, their backyard, may have shown individuals, if we're collecting that data and storing it, you know, is, are our citizens okay with that, that? Some people say, hey, that's, no, that's private, it shouldn't be kept on county servers or, taken it further is some of these software companies, um, like to maintain ownership of the data itself. And so it's making sure on that contract side of it, that, that privacy officer, myself, we're looking for those. Um, it'll be helping new software that comes in to see what data it's collecting or if it's storing in any data, to make sure it's safe and secure and protecting our citizens' privacy through that whole process and so you have in here the requirement that any new software contracts or renewals of our software, that we're taking a look at that a little bit closer, instead of just entering in to the agreement because we want the software package, that we're exploring it a little bit further to make sure we're owner of the data that's collected. Um, you know, say for example, we have cloud storage files that in our archive system, it, it stores all of our employee applications, our employee information. It's making sure that we own the data, that these companies that we enter into agreements with, that they don't own the data, at the end of the day, they go away, we keep the data, they, they're out of the data and so kinda gives that cursory review of the whole entire process, but if there is something that we find like that, that is storing data, that we bring it back to the commission and have that discussion with you guys to see what you wanna do. Taking it a little further from those comments and conversations that we had at the Association of Counties.
Commissioner Mon, you have other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do, so the only, the only thing I just, I, I, I know this is probably not what is intended, but it is in writing, so I wanna address it. Section eight, the CAO and CPO will watch and review any software purchases by the departments throughout the county operations. My hesitancy with that line is this, is that I know what it's supposed to reflect here, but it makes it sound like, well, if a department wants to purchase a software, we're limiting or saying what they can and can't, I, I feel like that maybe need to be reworded, or just say COs and CPO, um, will watch, review software that collect private data and will be presented to county commissioners. I, I just feel like that's a little restrictive, cause we're just saying you're gonna watch, review any software purchases, well, what if, I gue- I guess it begs the question, it kinda puts a gate there, a gatekeeping as to departments being able to purchase software and it's, I'm not saying let's close it out for discussion with the departments, but they should be able to purchase software without it being gatekeep, they, or work with, so does that make sense what I'm trying to say here?
Yeah.
I just think it needs to be worded just a little bit different.
It, and so the purchase itself begins at budget.
Sure.
So the departments, you think of this year, the departments present their budget request with software included in it. And so if you approve the budget with, with the purchase there, you've already approved the purchase of that software. What this does is it makes sure that myself, the CEO and CPO review that software and those contracts before to see if it's collecting any data and then if it is, we've gotta bring it back to you. If not, they go ahead and purchase, cause it's safe software.
Right, which.
So that's all that that paragraph.
Which I understand that, but the wording, somebody will even put, watch, review any software purchases which were approved in the budget process.
We can put, yeah, we can put any.
Something to that effect, like that it was already approved, we know it was approved, although, does that?
We can put.
Makes some sense, sir.
Chance, you have any suggestion for that?
So the, what, what I'm hearing here is that you may have a department that needs to purchase some software, it may have nothing to do with data collection and the, the, the goal is that they just be able to purchase that software without having to go through the gate. I think what Mac is saying is, their intent is to review the software, not as to prevent the purchase of it, but to address whether or not it collects data.
Correct, but I know, and I agree with that, but if you're just reading it?
Yeah.
That's, I just wanna clarify just a teeny bit, so that it, it specifies, yeah, it's been approved in their budgets, this is really only to make sure that we are with the private data.
You could, you could reword it to say, you know, software purchases by department heads or however you wanna word it, um, will be reviewed, uh, but it's not approved or data.
Yeah, just approved, I mean, just approved, yeah.
The CEO and CPO will watch and review any approved software purchases.
So upon, upon approval of a software.
I'm good with that.
There you go.
All you had to do is add one word.
One word, I'm good with that.
The whole intent of this is, any, you're approving the budget.
Yeah.
They're allowed to buy the, the software, we've gotta review it to make sure.
Yep, and that's exactly what I wanted to say, perfect, that works great, I just needed the word. Okay. Nope, I'm good with that, on my end, I don't know about Commissioner Harvey or Commissioner Stubbs.
Madam Chair?
Uh huh.
I, I want to highlight a few things that I've learned specifically on the discussion that was held at our, our Utah State Association Conference. At the, at the workshop we had, at the conference we attended.
Mm-hmm.
This discussion that we're, we're, we're now looking at has, has a lot to do with data governance that the state is trying to implement statewide, the, the legislature. Um, my biggest, my biggest, uh, learning point was that the state is trying to give full authority to counties or at least give counties an opportunity to make their own decisions in their counties about, um, kind of public, uh, just technology decisions and managing the, the risk locally at a county level for, for technology, the use of technology. And instead of having the state make a rule and applies it across the board and so this, this opportunity I think comes with, uh, what Master Yoda usually says, with great powers comes great responsibility. And, um, and some of the things that are important for us to note is that, um, first thing is with data governance, the process for purchase and procurement needs to be streamlined. Um, so that in our, in our government, in our county government, we're all aware of, of the type of technology our local county government is utilizing and understanding the technology that we're using. And also understanding the, just what, uh, it's capable of doing and, and, and streamlining it so that we're aware that if, if we have, like for instance, AI or G Chat GPT, where, you know, as, as we've gone nationally, there's this program where you can just throw a bunch of, scan a bunch of policies and create your own out of chat GPT, that kinda stuff. But then there's also, um, there's also this thing about public safety. There, they've got some really cool gadgets, like license plate readers, facial recognition stuff and, and I think the important thing I gained from the discussion about data governance is whatever technology that our county government decides to use that the public knows the technology that our county is, is utilizing being open and transparent to the public about what it does and what its purpose is and, and then being transparent about, um, if this technology is being used and this is the kind of information it collects, so it's really our opportunity as, as commissioners to take local control. As commissioners to take local control. On technology use and how it's applied in in our county government. I think that's the biggest takeaway for me in regards to this discussion. Um, you know, the technology is is. It's advancing, even now, there's probably another another new uh, software that's. Doing even more things and and that line between privacy and. Public safe uh, protecting public information kind of blurs. But here here's my my point in all of this. My point is that um. As we move forward with. With this uh, this idea that we're gonna take. The initiative to monitor the technology that we're gonna utilize moving forward. We just need to make sure that. It's there's there's, it's transparent, the public's aware of it. And that we're we're transparent about. The capability that the technology we're using in our county, what what it's capable of. I'm gonna go to our document that we're talking about now. When we last spoke. Um, we had tabled it because of the poly privacy policy statement. Um, I think we wanted to be clear on the titles. Right now, when you look at that uh. Public or what is that, the privacy policy statement. You know, we have who who can you contact? And right now we've got our county administrator. Assuming the role, we're giving him a new title. He's not gonna be the county administrator anymore. We're actually gonna call him the chief administrative officer. And I think at the last meeting, Commissioner Maan, maybe you remember too, we wanted to be clear about roles. And and it's important um, that we maintain those titles. I think at the last meeting, we said we need to change that to keep it as a county administrator. And so that's the change that I I I thought was changed, but it's still it's still chief administrative officer.
So if I can clarify that with you and just to clarify is. Yes, on the on the privacy policy, it should be county administrator on. The other policy is should be chief administrative officer because he's that of the data privacy. Are we on the same page? That's what we were clarifying.
So I changed it to how at the end of the day, that discussion had moved and so you see. You have the chief administrative officer and I've named obviously myself as that. And then I've got the chief privacy officer.
Okay, so go down to the other one, which is item.
The next item, I have on here chief privacy officer. On here, so any grandma requests is following that logic comes to me, Wyman or now with privacy. It can also go to the chief privacy officer.
Okay, so the question we're trying to clarify is, when it says how to reach this, this is who we are. Well, are you listing yourself as the chief administrative officer of? Privacy on this policy? Okay, so then that's what we're saying, that needs to be changed as. No, it's, no, we have to be a county administrator by law, cause statute. Cause our form of government as three commission is not a C A O by law. By by Utah statute. So it has to be county administrator.
So take that officer off of there.
You have to be count, you have to be county administrator to have the form of government we have. If not, we have to change our form of government. That's what the county, that's why. That's what U X coming down on us for and going to, in fact, they're trying to introduce some legislation because of that. Problem right there, which.
And so take officer off of.
So it's supposed to be county administrator, ye- yes, you are C A O on the data privacy, but. As far as just here, it's county administrator. Am I correct on that, Commissioner Harvey? Yeah, that's what he's saying, I believe.
That's correct, we're trying to be very clear with with our roles in our government. Because you know, Commissioner Maan, Commissioner Stubbs must say, we're always gonna be commissioner. Until we get reelected or get booted out. But um, even the 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 government, we only have a county administrator. So we need to stick with county administrator. I I know we can resolve this, this is, there's gotta be a simpler solution where. Maan and I are not saying no, let let's tailor this so. So that it complements our structure. That's the important piece, um, we wanna preserve our our positions. Our official positions in our county government as they are, we don't wanna create new titles or roles. But there has to be a remedy.
But you'll stay as thou on that document.
Yes, because this is required by Utah.
Yes, yes.
So I see what you're saying. So on this one here, all that I've heard so far is we will add the approved.
Number eight, number eight. Number eight.
Number nine, A uh, number eight, sorry.
Approved.
And then is there anything else on the ordinance?
For me, there's not.
So are you willing to approve that ordinance with that change?
I am, I don't know if everyone else is.
No, I I I like to sit down and talk together and. And work it out because I don't think anybody's trying to give this an an extra tile title. It's just nice to be able to work together and unity. Clarify things without feeling like, you know, the, so this was a good exercise.
Yeah, just following the statute.
Add approved on there.
Are you ready for a motion?
Now now Mac, I think if maybe you can remind me. There aren't any immediate needs to submit this back this month, isn't there?
There is.
There's still room, there's still an opportunity to. To get some work done on this.
Yeah, this one has to be approved by the state. The policy, which is next on the agenda, is our policy and so. The state has recommended that we have those all in place by the end of the year as well. But this one is the the data policy is the most critical. So the ordinance, if all that needs to be changed is the one word on there, that one's, that one's pretty easy. And we can make that a change and have the signatures for on the ordinance.
Cause I'm looking at the next commission meeting. As maybe with the amended changes. Getting it then.
Did you, did you see more changes, Commissioner Harvey?
I think just being clearer on the roles, I think we 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 understand each other when I say that now. I still. I still think we can fine tune it a little bit more in regards to, I think the policy. Where the section seven. Reporting accountability, I think was one area I was looking at, the other one was.
Trying to make more changes, I think it'd be nice to do it in person, it's so hard to hear each other.
So is this something we have time to bring back next, the next meeting? So just then it would give you more time to look at. So we could see the two changes that we requested come back and then you could go through that in a couple of weeks and bring that back?
And and if we can, I think it'll be helpful to do it in person because when. It's kinda hard to hear you, you're kinda hard to hear Mac and we can't not hear each other and. And so anyways.
Yeah, and and hopefully Jen's, you're kinda getting the the gist of our conversation. From a legal um, standpoint.
So maybe we just table these? So we have them right?
So we don't have motion, we have a motion to table it, is that what we do?
Yeah, there's a table to see the final version at the next meeting, isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a motion to table this to the next meeting, at which time. We should come to a resolution for a final draft because this has been asked from us to be in a timely man manner so. And that we are going to do this in person with the presence of our attorney there to guide us too, so. So we have any second to them, I mean, do we have a motion to table it?
So I'll make a motion to table both the ordinance and the. Privacy policy statement until our next commission meeting and which should have the changes.
I'll I'll second that motion. Can you amend your motion to set aside a time where we can sit down together, Commissioner Maan? So can word smith this out?
So. I have my motion, I also add that we set aside some time. Prior, whether it's in the work session, before commission, for our next, before our next commission meeting possibly. There is, which do we have?
I I can't remember what it was, but I saw it on the calendar anyway. Is there a work session before next time?
Next, Commissioner, we were planning on doing the budget stuff.
Oh, yes. So Commissioner Harvey, I guess my suggestion be is, do you wanna throw out some times to us? That you could be up here. Or.
It had to be a week before the commission meeting, so people.
Oh, and you guys are all gone next week, so I, if you throw some times out this week or. When when can you come up here in person to do this? But, yeah, that was my motion plus much more.
So we had to.
I can be available this Friday.
Let me see, this Friday. I could do Friday at ten. Can you do Friday at ten?
I can do Friday at ten.
Okay.
And we'll make, we'll make Jen's bring the treats.
Okay.
I've got some good treats.
Then if you have any budget, I guess we could throw that in there. Any budget updates. Okay, Friday at ten. Oh, that was my motion, did you, okay. Do I need to remake the motion?
I I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So that's the last item, so now we have.
Those two items.
So now we go to um. To commission report.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, of course with the Thanksgiving holiday, last week was kinda strange, but the thing I wanted to highlight today is that I was invited to a meeting yesterday. With Promise Partnership of Utah and it's actually an economic mobility initiative and they act, they had um. People. They they had a lot of people invited, they had people from the city of Monticello, they had. Talia, they had library, anyhow, it's more like a think tank to work with them and we're trying to figure out. If you're gonna partnership and have some economic mobility, where's the backbone of that and. We're kind of talking a little bit, maybe working with the backbone of the coalition because that. Department already exists with a lot of great partners or people in that and they know a lot of what's going on and this is focused. Very much around youth and teen and children and trying to get them to come back, they also had. In attendance, people from the college and so it's just kind of a starting point. To decide which is the best way to start building layers within the communities and within the county and. We all express great challenges within our commu- within our county, both geographically and um. Economically and you know, kind of obstacles and they actually commented about our county and said, yeah, you have a very unique county, we said, yes, we do. So they did have some um. Community development approaches, there is a research study that was done on our county, which is very interesting, I can share with all of us. At some point, I could just make a copy, but it it lists where we fall economically and kind of. The poverty levels and and the challenges we face, which we all know, we're very aware of. But kind of getting to that base layer and trying to build on it so that when we talk about these issues that we're all on the same page and. One might, one group of people might have information that we don't have and vice versa, so it's kind of bringing everyone to the table and. We left kind of feeling like the coalition might be a great starting point and I'm sure we will meet again, but. Um, kind of some promising things because at that point, the partners that they bring in actually can bring funding in. And there was a lady from Arkansas that works with very poor counties and in her work. Some of the school districts have become the number one school district in their state due to her work. Or have um, been bolstered by. Um, funding that has come into their county specifically by the work and the needs, so. I think it's a great starting point, we'll just continue that conversation. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's my report.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey.
Reports, right, Madam Chair? Um, I just wanna highlight uh, one thing. I uh, was just informed about uh. Vehicle registration and a request to obtain certificate of Indian blood. Um, and I'm not clear exactly the current changes that um. Some of the public are are talking about. Maybe it's the residency requirements for the state, I'm not sure. But um, some folks are reporting that they're being asked to bring in their certificate of Indian blood. When they're coming in to renew their vehicle registration. And I'm assuming maybe that's a residency process now, but um. I think the the biggest struggle is not many of the. Public who need to re- recertify their registration on their vehicles. Are aware of the the new process, if there is one. Um, I think one experience is that if they're being asked to bring a certificate of Indian blood. That they they travel the distance. But because they are not aware that that was a requirement. To bring with them when they're renewing their vehicle. They have to turn around and travel back. And bring in that document, so I'm not sure commissioners, if. If you're aware of the new process that is in place, uh, Mac, I don't know. I'm not clear.
Okay.
If there's a residency process. That is now being implemented. But I'm asking for clarification.
Okay, I can tell you what I know. Do you know, we hear in the news so and so was stopped at the airport, just because they color brown and this and that. They say of Utah. Has a system, and the only way you can prove. And get this type of driver's license. Is to show your birth certificate and show a document of being a citizen. I don't know if you can see my, I don't know. He he cannot see that. Anyway, in my driver's license in the corner, I. Maybe you can pull your driver's license. If you see a gold type of a star in the. On your right corner on the top. Did you have one?
Yeah, the gold star.
On the top. And that is permission. It tells you that you're a citizen. So when you go through the airport, there's no delay, people are not checking, nobody's gonna arrest you, so we do have a system. And I think even though it looks like an intrusion for the people to be asked that. It's only for their protection, so the people are not being harassed because um. You know, they are trying to find citizens that are illegal, and it's a sad thing for me. Being an immigrant to see that, but we are country of laws. And that's when I came as over the border. I had to do a lot more things than lots of immigrants not from having ac- all my shots, uh police. Uh records, uh funds, and. They told they are, I wasn't gonna use the the welfare system here. I could not work in those days. There was lots of things like that. And when you're traveling, you see here lots of people speak Spanish, and you're assume well they're not a citizen. So I think. Having those, being asked to provide that you are a a new citizen is for your own protection. And the bill, the House Bill three hundred is a bill that very worth of worth of for me. I tried to research as much I could to help a citizen, especially a citizen that border other states. Navajo Mountain, for instance, the chapter meeting is in in Arizona. Driver's license, I'm from Arizona. Uh, so they've. As the current thing, they won't be able to vote. We can tell, we can be nice, and we can say, yeah, we can. You know, ensure alignment, probably trying to figure out how we can na- navigate that. And and so, and I know the uh. People are certain color skin, they feel like they have to be protected, they don't wanna keep too much information. But when we don't, when they don't have the information, that all they can do is go to the records, and they see the name. And they see you don't have the driver's license. Anybody can fake a driver's license, but having the seal there. And it's made in a certain way, a guarantee. You you write a citizen, and then you don't have to feel nervous or scared. I mean, I always scare. I get stopped every single time. I don't know why they think. I get a hammer in my hands, everything, even though I have this kinda license. I don't know if I look like a terrorist, I don't know, but. My daughter said because I look scared. Well, I'm scared because I know they're gonna stop me. Anyway, so and it's it's very, I don't know, you said when I asked you if you're having that problem with. Area, people in your area being worried about the voting, that House Bill three hundred. But I know that that doesn't matter if somebody register you. Or had that, and I don't know, lineman probably can answer more of those questions, but. I don't know if it that satisfies your question, but that is one of the reasons that. Requested to prove, you have to have prove a citizenship.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your your explanation, because anything helps at this. This moment. I myself am not clear about whether. Re-registering your vehicle has a new process or not. Um, and and Madam Chair, just so that you understand. It's really not an in- an invasion of privacy to be asking natives for their C I B. It's rather if there can be better communication. Trip. They have the all their documents with them. They know what they need to bring. So that when they make the the commute, they're not caught off guard. And so, and still, I don't know, maybe maybe at least I can ask this. Has vehicle registration process, has it changed? Let me start with that question.
Yeah. And there's lots of question when it comes on times like this where.
Uh, we'll check on that. I'll I'll talk to the D M V and just see. There there's two different processes. There's division of driver's license, which is the gold star. And then there's. Motor vehicle registration.
Yeah, uh and 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 I know. And and I know as we talk deeper about it, we're probably gonna complicate the issue, cause you're right, Mac. Division of driver's license is where you go to renew your driver's license. Or you get a driver's permit, and that office is here in the building that I'm in. But what I'm referring to is when your plates expire. And you need to get a new, a new renewal. You, I know it's done there at the assessor's office. Is that the assessor's office? There, and so. We're talking about two different things, and what I'm I'm highlighting is the vehicle registration and renewal. And I'm not, and I'm not clear. Has that process been amended? Are there now additional documentation required? When you're registering a vehicle, that's, I'm asking that question.
Maybe we can invite the people from downstairs, come and inform us, and then many.
I I would recommend that because. I think I think I'm gonna drive up there and find out myself today, cause I do need to register a vehicle, so.
It is snowing up here.
Oh, is it? Old boy. Anyhow, um, two points with this. Is if there's been a change to how people are required to. To renew their registration. That change needs to be shared. The second thing is, w- we can do better job. I can do, I can help. By going out and doing my part and educating the communities where I visit. As a commissioner to say, guys, to help you when you're traveling to renew your vehicle. You need to bring A, B, C, and D with you. So that you don't turn around and go back home just to go get that document and go back up. Kind of the thing. Um, but but that's that's my point in all of this, Madam Chair, and uh.
Thank you. I think I'll just, since it's snowing and I had to travel down south, I going to. I think I talked enough other things I'm doing today, and so I just wanna. Have one more motion. Do we have anything else? Would need to go adjourn to anything else or just?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
For home.
Be safe.
Yeah, anyway, so. Thank you. Y gracias, merci. I'm in favor.